Good evening. Welcome to our meeting. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Level.
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor. Mr. Pearl.
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Here.
Mrs. Casper.
Here. Can you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Second. Jenny, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes.
Mr. Pearl.
Yes.
Mrs. Casper.
Yes. Okay, we'll start today with Board President's comments. The only thing I have is that Mr. Miller and I had the pleasure of attending the Boys and Girls Club this afternoon. They had Senator Lang came and gave a proclamation to the Student of the Year, the Youth of the Year and the Youth of the Year runner-up. And they gave us a little tour of the club and they had some snacks too. Very impressive. Young lady was the runner-up and the gentleman was the winner. So both very impressive. So we appreciate that. They invited Mr. Miller and I, me on behalf of the board, just because they were keeping their numbers low. So they are looking at sometime in the near future, having the board come and do a tour. I know we've been there, but they've done a lot since they opened. So that was kind of nice. And I stole your thunder.
You did. And I'll just back that up with Sita was the was the Youth of the Year and he is going to go into engineering at either Dayton or the University of Cincinnati. And so I was pushing for that. And then Megan was the runner-up and I think she wants to be a nurse practitioner and she's undecided which university, but it was nice. And they have a new director, Jessica Walls.
She that she's the program director.
Yeah.
Jessica Caleb is the club director. He's also new.
Jessica's a 2014 grad of Lakota East. So that's my letter.
And the Youth of the Year is a junior and the runner-up was a sophomore. So they've got a little bit of time.
That's all I had.
Mrs. Logan.
The only comment I have is congratulations to Adam Zink. He is a new daddy. Lincoln Lee was born last Wednesday and he's here at the board meeting tonight. So speaks to dedication, but congratulations, Adam.
Adam is here, not Lincoln.
Well, Adam is here, not Lincoln. Correct. Yes.
That's it. All right. Mrs. Fuller, we have a student and staff spotlight?
Good evening, everyone. When given the chance to find a problem and solve it, students in our Butler Tech satellite course called Engineering Design and Development, it's a capstone class, look no further than the halls of Lakota West High School. In the end, their work yielded industry-recognized certifications and viable solutions to two different challenges brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic this school year. Kevin Bibb, Nicholas Holsher, Alex Holloway, Katie Horton, Evan Morgan, and Justin Stock worked to develop a better way to run the cafeteria lines at Lakota West, improving the efficiency by 40%. Ethan Berger, Zach Burns, Dylan Corrigan, and Nate Nowicki set out to find a find a way to convert the current drinking fountains that were not in use due to COVID-19 restrictions into bottle filling stations. In addition to adding the station at West Main Campus, the students are also converting two fountains at the West freshman campus. Here's a video to share more about their work.
For the last few years with the capstone curriculum, I picked the project. By them picking it themselves, they sure they had to dig in the beginning, but I let them struggle and they were like, they found great projects.
We tried to find something that most students could relate to. And we decided that almost every student has to buy lunch at some point, so we might as well improve that system.
For me personally, at least a couple of years ago, I had a problem with like social anxiety. So I actually stopped like eating school lunch and started packing because I just hated going into the lunchroom.
Before all the students would just rush into the small area to grab their lunch, we decided that we could improve how long it took to get your lunch and pay and get out of the lunchroom. It's definitely more organized once you walk in. If you're going to a certain lunch station, you know exactly what line you have to be in. In the beginning, on average, it was somewhere between two and three minutes. And then the last time we measured, it was around one or one and a half minutes.
As a team, we didn't want to just do something that was like, it was like just to just to get through the class or just to get the grade. We wanted to do something that could help other people in our community. We only had one water fountain or like a pair of water fountains open in one spot in the building. So we were going to, we we came up with the idea to figure out how to attach something to other water fountains that were closed because of COVID, so that we could fill up water bottles and also stay safe. But we originally did our first product here in our main campus, but then we got, we were approached by the freshman principal and we went over there starting in January and we're hoping to put in two over there.
It took a lot of innovation to do. We used a lot of ideas that we wouldn't normally have come up with because we had limited resources available to us.
The curriculum is very specific in regards to like finding what the problem is. Is there really a problem or not? Look applied about anything. I think students were kind of awakened by like how powerful the process and the insufficiency could be.
So we had different steps where we had to like analyze the root causes of what caused our problem. Then we would like mock up prototypes and figure out how to make that prototype better and better until we finally created our final product.
So they were kind of learning curriculum and doing the project together at the same time. And they're applying all these tools like on a daily basis.
We took the curriculum that the teacher was teaching and actually applying it to something that was real and not just like a made up project.
I think a big part of like engineering is just having confidence in yourself. And I think that's really shining this class too.
I really liked the freedom that we had as a group, but for the most part, we're coming up with our own goals each class and doing them ourselves. I think it helped learn sort of the business side and the bureaucratic side of engineering, like working with different organizations and figuring all that out and building relationships. We had to work with not only the Lakota West staff, but also the, I think it's child nutrition staff.
The administration was awesome with this whole project. It was really cool to see how willing to try new things and like push the boundaries.
With this, we can see our results in person. It's almost quantifiable. It's there. It's physical. We can see it. We can touch it. We can pursue. Now we can actually see every day like the changes that we made.
I'd say 95, almost 100% of my students are going into some type of engineering field.
I think it's where I'm going to set them apart because they're going to be able to look at a design problem and get to the end result a lot faster.
Pretty impressive.
I say those projects always impress me when they do that. They think outside the box. Anybody else have any comments or?
Appreciate Betsy for putting that together. It's always good to be able to see what our students are. Can't wait to have them eventually get back.
Right. Able to see them here in person. I do miss that.
Nice to see the real-life application.
Right. Agreed. Okay, this will be the first opportunity for public comments. Public comments will need to be on agenda items. You will have three minutes. State your name and address. Does somebody keep track of that three minutes or is that my job?
Adam has been keeping track of it on the Zoom. So.
Perfect. Is there anybody, we'll go to in-person first. Is there anybody in person that would like to speak? And do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay. We reached a point where there are some board updates. Butler Tech, Mrs. Schaefer.
All right. First of all, I passed out these newsletters and I apologize that I had failed to pass those out the last couple of times. So I have a backup for you of those newsletters. If you'll notice, inside page that everyone across Butler Tech got to see is what was just featured. So the stories that were just, you just saw on the screen featuring our students with the water stations and the reengineering of the cafeteria. Those engineering capstone projects are featured in the newsletter. So I wanted to point that out. Another story that I thought was of interest in here is a Butler Tech alumni. CT Tech was hired at the Westchester Medical Center. So we talk about trying to develop talent of our students and get them to stay in the area is a big interest of local employers. And that was recently achieved. And again, a nice feature for local employers to know that when they invest in interning some of our students, that they're seeing that return on investment by being able to hire back those students. So I think that was a nice piece. Butler Tech's graduation is going to be May 17th at the Centaas Center. Another thing that Butler Tech has been doing has been inviting local representatives to our meetings. Unfortunately, at our last meeting, the person who was supposed to Zoom in was unable to make it. But that's still been a nice feature to add. They recently were able to accept 670 students to their onsite program that was out of 1,445 applicants. So of those 1,445 applicants, when they actually looked at those who met the criteria, that were able to get onsite interviews, there were 1,142 who did onsite interviews. And again, 670 of those were accepted. They also have 137 students who will be doing the 10th Grade Academy. So that's a newer program for kids in 10th grade who are going to start on into the program. May 20th will be the Natural Science Center groundbreaking. So we're looking forward to that. Kids will still be able to continue the program, but they're just going to have to move them around. They think the academics for that program will be moved to D. Russell Lee next year while that construction is going on. Because there'll be, there'll be too much construction to be able to do the academics onsite next year. So but they are going to be able to incorporate with the construction company. They've asked that students be able to work with the construction company to kind of incorporate project learning. And there's going to be some of that through the entire process. So I think that'll be a great experience for the students to work hand in hand on different projects through the whole process. And again, as we've talked about, they've been very involved in the whole design phase. So a lot of the other discussion was legislative, which I'm sure you all will cover. So I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions for Mrs. Schaefer, Butler Tech?
I just had one real quick question. The graduation on May 17th, you said, is that, you know, is that going to be in-person or virtual for Butler Tech?
They're planning on the Centaas Center last I heard. And that will be changed when we meet next week.
Okay.
It was, it's supposed to.
Probably good. Then I was just curious. Thank you.
Is that something we as a board have gone to in the past?
No, I think just the Butler Tech rep goes. I believe you're welcome to if you'd like to.
I get invited to grab it. I can't. There's always usually something that happens that night, but I don't have it on my calendar.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we've ever been invited, but.
I don't remember pre-pandemic.
No, I don't. We've ever been.
Or also, again, I don't have much information on this now. May 6th, there's going to be a student showcase event, but I don't have details on that. I'm hoping to get more on that next Tuesday. So I'll have to get that out too, once I know more, but I don't really know anything to tell you how to run into that or what's going to be available.
Is it virtual again or will it be in-person?
I believe it'll just be virtual, but I don't have any, I don't really have the details yet.
And assuming the groundbreaking is just for reps as well?
Yeah.
Great.
Any other questions? Okay, legislative update. Mrs. Logan, Mr. Miller. Want to start or you want me to?
I'll just mention that we're watching House Bill 200, which is the report card bill. A lot of changes going on with that. And so as it gets closer, I'll have more info to share with you. And I guess this falls under legislative as well, but we had a survey come from the governor's office about our interest in vaccinations for students 16 and up. So we're waiting to hear more information from the governor's office about what that would look like.
I forwarded you an email with lots of legislative bills and where we're at with that. It also includes included in the email, there are links. So if you want, and you can't sleep tonight and you want to read every word of the bills, it's there. But as far as myself, the one that we're tracking the closest is of course, the budget bill. And so House Bill 110 is the budget bill. I was given notice today that tomorrow afternoon, House Bill 1 is scheduled to be accepted in the House Finance Committee and then fit in incorporated into the House's version of their budget. So that's kind of where we are. And then as the House develops theirs, then it'll go over to the Senate and then it'll come back to a conference committee. And then by June 30th, fingers crossed, it'll go to the governor for signatures. But that's the update that I had today. So.
Have we been in any conversations with our local representatives about?
We have. We have. We actually had a meeting last Thursday. The Superintendent and Treasurers of Butler County invited George Lang, our senator. And there is a small leadership group that was put together by the three educational organizations and Linda is part of that as well as a board member from Tallawanda. So we put together, we had one meeting with him, a very small meeting, just to confirm that he is still in favor of the Fair School Funding Plan. And he did acknowledge that. Then we set up a meeting with the school community basically to say, we want to foster this relationship with you since you are a new senator, even though he's been our representative, to set something up. And we, we did have that first meeting and we are coordinating future meetings, which which would also include the representatives who served Butler County as well. So I feel like it was a good start. We also talked about the report card and Ed Choice at that meeting as well. I felt like it was a productive meeting.
Good.
So it was good.
To hear.
It was good. Yeah. So anybody else have anything else to add as far as legislative?
I actually had an OSBA Southwest Regional Executive Meeting on the 6th. And we had a legislative update from Will Schwartz as part of that as well. They do expect a House vote to pass the budget bill out by April 22nd. And in the Senate, we're expecting there'll be quite a few changes to the fair funding formula. And it's been put in the hands of Senator Bill Blessing. Interesting. Interesting gentleman. And I think that he'll add something to that process. But we do expect to see some changes too. There is a Senate version of the report card bill. That's Senate Bill 145 and House Bill 200. It was described as kind of a dueling bill. We'll see a lot of changes between the two and hopefully there'll be a great compromise that works. Senator Lang did talk about the fact that our report card is a broken system and was very supportive of changes from the Senate for that and appreciate it. And he voiced again his support for the Fair School Funding Formula or Plan as well. There will be a webinar hosted by OSBA at the end of the month with Ohio Budget Director Aaron Roush. And I believe we'll all get an invitation to that as well. It'll be a Zoom meeting. I don't know if it's come out yet.
Okay.
We also talked about the rest of the events for this year. They are planning on a live Capitol Conference in November. The August retreat and the fall conference are also planned to be live at this point. And the final piece, many of you know that the executive director for many years was Ron Diver. He passed away unexpectedly last year. And there's been a scholarship program set up in his name. It'll be announced at the Fall Conference. And looking forward to our students having an opportunity for that.
Oh, good.
Nice. So that's it for now.
I'm sorry, you said it in the fall, like the Fall Conference for Ron?
Yes.
October. Is that October usually, Linda?
I don't think they've set the date yet, but it is more moving October.
Okay. Was there any indication of what those changes that they were expecting out of the Senate version were?
They haven't even gotten the budget in-house. So they've just started very informal testimony from the state budget office and from ODE, but it's not even formal testimony at this point. Given the different leaders that have just come into the House and the Senate, I would expect them to be pretty different from each other. So Jenny, would you agree?
We were hearing for a while that there was, could be a school funding proposal, a new formula coming from the Senate. We're hearing now that it's probably not the case, which is good. But as with all budget negotiations, they will, there will be some difference as of opinion with the Senate. We don't have anything solid on exactly what they're going to want yet. So. Yeah.
They would do their own version of that. They really talked about doing their own version?
There was discussion, yes. But as we get closer and closer, that doesn't seem to be the case.
Good. Anybody else legislative? This is an opportunity for new business. Does anybody have any new business? All righty. Then we need a motion to approve Treasurer's Recommendation A and B, approval of monthly financials and the approval of board minutes.
So moved.
Mrs. Logan, will you call the roll?
Mr. Level.
Yes.
Mr. Pearl.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Casper.
Yes.
Thank you.
We need a motion to approve Superintendent Recommendation Action Items, which are personnel items, a bid for black topping and donations, A, B, and C. Have a motion? So moved. Second, Julie and Michael. And when you're ready, Mrs. Logan.
May I ask a question first? How many new positions are on here, ma'am?
To my knowledge, there shouldn't be any yet.
They're all one year.
Shouldn't be any new positions?
Correct.
Didn't look like any.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. Good question.
Ready? Yep. Okay, sorry. Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Pearl.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. Casper. Yes. This brings us to the second portion of public comments. Again, three minutes. State your name and address. And if there's anybody, I didn't grab the sign and sheet to see if anybody had signed in. Is there anybody that? Good evening. Good evening. Can you make sure to you talking into the microphone, just so the people at home can hear you?
Good evening. My name is Karen Malfetta. I live at 7834 Hunter's Ridge Drive in Westchester Township. I have put five children through Lakota School System. I have two left. I have one that's about to graduate Butler Tech next month and I still have an eighth grader. So he has four more years to go. What I'm about to talk about is not going to be popular and nobody's going to probably like what I have to say, but I'm going to say it. I didn't care what people thought about it. When I was in school and as a parent and a grandparent, I couldn't care less about being popular or not saying it's right for my children. Okay, back in December, my son came home and showed me a nine-page slide presentation that his advisory teacher showed to the entire class. This slide presentation, now I'm just gonna, I'm gonna talk really fast because I have a lot to say. This nine-page slide presentation talked about there are more than two genders. They told them there are not just male and female. They go on to explain the different ones. They go on to explain that boys can love boys, girls can love girls. Basically, you can love anybody you want. They go on to talk about how Christians are the most homophobic group there is. They said parents are homophobic too, and on and on and on. My son's school work. I think the parents in Lakota, like me, not anymore, were very naive because we trust our school system. We believe we live in a good place and our school system is there to take care of all our children, not just some of them. I don't feel that way anymore because my eyes are wide open. My children's, my son's assignments, the videos and the assignments from his class do not match the curriculum description of language odds. My son is told that he needs to use proper pronouns when speaking to someone, a girl who believes she's a boy or a boy who believes she's a girl. So right there and then, the Lakota School System and the teachers, the educators are lying to my children. That is not so. If you want to tell facts, then you tell facts. You can mutilate genitals. You can do whatever you want. A boy can put on a dress. A girl can put on a suit. It doesn't make it so. But you're trying to shove this down the throat of every student that is in this school system. And this goes for all of you who I found out today are the ones who approve the curriculum that is used in VLO and used in in-classroom learning. Okay, his school assignments, the radical brownies, you remember like the Girl Scouts, the brownies. I'm watching videos on the radical brownies while Black Lives Matter comes in to talk to my, to children about the injustices that the whites have with the blacks. Colin Kaepernick took a knee. Jazz put on a dress. All the things, these are the heroes we need to look up to. Did you tell the kids or did you forget to tell them that Colin Kaepernick wore pigs on his socks with disrespect to law enforcement in our country? Or is that it? Nobody respects law enforcement anymore. Our curriculum in VLO, I don't know about the in-learning anymore because I wanted my son in-person out of there in December and he was saturated with Black Lives Matter. Okay, do Black Lives Matter? Absolutely. White lives, everyone's life.
Your three minutes is up, ma'am.
Okay, my husband will continue. Thank you so much.
Thirty years with my wife.
Sarah, would you state your name, please, and your address?
I'm John Malfetta. Thirty years with my wife, five children, and I work a lot. Never dabbled into my school work. That was always my wife's job. I have seen over the years and how it's just degenerated into, well, I'm gonna pause on it. I want to read you guys something here. Okay, because we all should know the definition of language odds, but morality. Morality refers to a code of conduct about what actions are considered right and what is wrong. That is taught by the parent. That is taught by the parent to instill that in their child and to transfer it over to the school system. And the school doesn't have the obligation between right and wrong with the child. Yes. Okay, the definition of morality and ideology is a system that believes, okay, ideology is a system that believes on doctrines that intend to guide social groups or individuals, most often with political or social connotations. That is what's happening right now. I don't really dabble, like I said, into school because my wife does a great job of that. This is appalling to me. I've watched my son who has great values and I might say, oh, my kid have great values, but what this system is trying to teach into these young kids is not moral. It is unjust. They have taken their opinions and their ideologies and have forced them onto these young generations. And I'm going to tell you, with all this separation and all these groups, the the black groups, the Hispanic groups, the white groups, the lesbians and all, you guys are not creating unity. You're creating greater division in this small, you little Lakota district. But if you watch the news and all these politicians, you guys are doing the same thing that they're doing in this little, little town of ours to young kids. So you guys really need to take a step back because it's not left. It's not right. It's straight. What happened teaching honesty, integrity, unity? It's not being taught. What's being taught is to look at a person judging by his skin. And believe it or not, that's what you're teaching. Get input. You guys are catering to the minority, not the majority. Get everybody's input. There's a battery, right? Negative and positive. There was a cell, a light bulb doesn't work with either one. You guys are looking at the positive. Oh, it's uniting them. No. You're dividing the majority. You're not looking at the negative. This is creating with the of kids who don't believe in this. That you're spoon-feeding it down their throat. It needs to be addressed because you're losing kids. You're losing lots of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Celia Rendon. I reside at 7470 Hollywood Drive in Westchester Township. Although I do not have any children of school age any longer, I do have many grandchildren currently in the school system and I will have, I have three great-grandchildren who will be entering kindergarten or first grade within the next two to three years. Like all of you, I pay taxes. But unlike all of you, my taxes pay your salary. Within, I would say the last two weeks, we have gotten an increase of $400 per year on our real estate taxes. on our real estate taxes. Sixty-four percent of my real estate taxes goes toward the school. And I've got to say that I am not okay with what is being taught. I want to know whatever happened to ABCs, one, two, threes. I recently heard, and I'm sure you had too, in the last couple of weeks, that it's okay to tell a child that two and two equals five. What the hell does that even mean? How does that make any sense? We send our kids and we entrust them to you six to seven hours a day. That is almost one-third of their life for at least twelve years. We as parents send our children to you to be educated with a trade or academics so that when they get out into the world, they can earn a good living and function as productive members of society. Schools should be a place of fun and learning. I hear that drag queens are being invited into middle school to encourage kids to be themselves. I wish one of you, at least one of you, can explain to me what the hell that even means. It should be fun, like I said. PC culture and transgenderism, all that propaganda has no place in the classroom. Children should not have to concern themselves with the hell, what this means. It is actually robbing them of their innocence. Schools have also become indoctrination camps, a lab for mixing social and political experiments. And all of this amounts to unnecessary distractions in the learning process and creates fear and uncomfortable feelings for the kids. And just as a final note, I'd like to quote Dr. Shafali. She's an expert in family dynamics and personal development. It's time to move away from rhetoric messages of convenience that we feed our kids and instead challenge ourselves to probe toward more inconvenient truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Brady, and I reside at eight-five-two-five Monticello Drive, West Chester. I'm here today to discuss, to discuss of the curriculum that you are allowing to come into our schools and trying to indoctrinate our children with the moral views and beliefs. I, as well as many others, will be coming in numbers. We will not stand by and allow you to destroy our youth with such garbage. We will come back and we will keep coming back until our children are provided with an education that will not destroy and confuse their young minds, an education that will teach them to be good, honest, productive individuals, capable of dealing with society in a way that allows them to thrive and be successful in life. More and more parents are starting to wake up and see what is going on. You were voted in by us, we the people, and we will find a way to get you out and replace you with well-intended individuals who actually care about the youth of today. Thank you. God bless.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Brianna Oakley. I live at forty-seven oh-one oh Ray Court, Liberty Township. I am a two thousand thirteen Lakota East graduate, and when I started my family, like a lot of others, I chose Lakota because of what I believed. It was a great school system. I have siblings in Lakota now and have seen the curriculum slowly change over the years. In math, I was taught math. In history, I was taught history, and in science, I was taught science. Now I see that teachers' own opinions and ideologies are being pushed in a classroom setting, and most of the time without any parent knowledge. I have an almost three-year-old and another baby on the way, and there is no way that I want my children in a school district that is going to promote hate, division, and perversion. My concern is for the future of my children, and I do not want my children to grow up thinking you are defined by your race, religion, gender, or political affiliation. I want my children to get an education and learn the basic fundamentals of each subject for them to succeed in life. It is not the schools, teachers, school boards, or anyone's job that isn't my husband or myself to teach my children about extreme ideology or opinions that push agendas. I will make it my mission to ensure my children's future is protected and not corrupted by their own school system, and I will work alongside the other parents here in Lakota who are fighting for the same. I seek to find moral and God-fearing people to sit on this board, and like I said, I can speak for myself and everyone here and other parents that we won't stop until every parent in Lakota knows what's actually being taught in the schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Christy Erdel. I reside at five-one-one-three Princeton Road in Liberty Township. Hi, good. I'm sorry, you can, I apologize. Uh, my name's Christy Erdel, and I reside at five-one-one-three Princeton Road in Liberty Township. Um, I recently emailed you guys in response to a slideshow presentation that was disseminated at the student body at Ridge Junior High. As mentioned in my email, I am just one Christian voice, a wife, a parent, a mother, a hospital employee, a small business owner, and a Butler County community member. In addition, please know that I do represent many in Butler County who do hold unwaveringly to the biblical truth established in the Word of God that does not change with cultural whims and norms. A lot of emotion, anger, frustration, and much concern has come in recent days regarding the progressive agenda that seems to be taking shape in our district. Some of that has already been expressed, so I will refrain from repeating, only to acknowledge that their concerns are also my concerns. Our kids come to school each day to learn, just that, and that's it. Teach them math, language arts, history as it was written, with all the good, bad, ugly, and ills of American history, science, and social studies. But keep the obsession with sexual identity, preference, gender, and confusion out of my kids' classrooms. If we as parents have to consent on discussions of basic human anatomy, teachers in the district have no authority or right to discuss these topics without parental consent and have no right, um, to do this without us knowing ahead of time. This curriculum needs to be discussed with the parents. It needs to be discussed with the community, in my opinion, no matter what the age of the child is. In the end, this is my message in the three minutes that I'm allowed tonight. The seat that each one of you holds belongs to the community members, the parents, and over sixteen thousand students that you strive to serve each day. However, my main objective today is to remind you that the decisions and curriculums and direction that you leave these children is something that is not to be taken lightly. Whether you are a person of faith, know that your decisions, as well as mine, whether done in public, private, recorded, or redacted, are known to God, and each one of us will be accountable to that. I understand that we are a public school. I understand the complexity of acceptance, diversion, inclusion, and faith. I understand that as a nation, we took God out of the schools a long time ago. That does not, however, mean that he is left. That doesn't mean, however, that we will not be accountable one day for the decisions that we make on behalf of these students and the direction that we lead this district. I also understand that I have the right to pull my children out of public school any day that I choose. However, I want them in a public school. I want them to be a light. I want them to be a voice and recognize that they still have a voice in this district, just like we do. So in closing, please hear past my frustrations and hear the true intention tonight. Please do not bow to the political correctness and ideology of culture right now for Lakota. Each one of you has been placed in the seat that you sit for a reason. Do not take that responsibility lightly. So when the political correctness, money, cultural norms, progressively loud agenda, complicated backdoor business decisions find their way into our decision-making of this district, please know that we will be accountable for whether we stand in God's word or not. So choose wisely. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board in person? Adam, do we have anybody on Zoom? Emily?
Hi, this is Emily Jackson. I am at nine-five-seven-one McCully Road, and I'm a parent of Lakota students. And I would like to give an alternate point of view for the other comments earlier today. I've been to community conversations. I attend most of the board meetings, and I have heard several of our students want a voice. And I applaud each of you for giving those students, whether they are the majority or the minority, a voice in our schools. They should, it is a sensitive topic, and I do think it might be, um, more agreeable to the other parents if it were given advanced notice, like air testing or, um, sex ed classes, if, if parents knew that that was coming so they could pull their children out. But I also believe that it is important that we prepare our children for when they enter the workforce, when they cannot ignore someone else's view. And so I think it is important that we do acknowledge that in the schools, that we do let all children feel safe and that they belong. And I appreciate each one of you and the different backgrounds that you have. We have Julie with the financial background. We have Brad with education. We have Linda with community service and, um, sitting on several boards. We have Michael, very involved in the community. We have Kelly as the PTO. You each have a different perspective that you have brought, and we vote for you because of your unique perspective that brings compromise and agree to the difficult conversations that, that a lot of us don't want to have. Um, so I just, I applaud you, and I thank you for giving that different point of view. But do try to be aware, as I am aware, that there are other parents who disagree with it. Um, and maybe just give everyone a heads up so that if they want to pull their children out or be able to discuss that at the dinner table, that they have that option, since we know a lot of kids, especially the older ones, don't talk as much when they get home from school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Adam? Okay, Mr. Miller, I'm gonna let you first address the curriculum question and the...
In terms of the curriculum, some of the items that were brought up tonight, there's some basis to the conversation. Some of the things, quite honestly, aren't accurate. Um, so my, um, uh, sort of offering to the group would be maybe representative group could meet with me and Mr. Coney, our curriculum director, and go through some of the concerns that you might have. Um, some of you have already reached out and have done that. So I'll offer that up again.
Oh, yeah, I like some of, like, I don't, I don't believe that we have drag queens in the junior high as...
We, we don't know.
Okay, so...
But again, she mentioned that she was told that.
Right, exactly. So that's why I think meeting with you...
There are some, there are some things that we can work with here. The issue that maybe started this actually was October, November, and I, we talked to the principal at that time, so, yeah.
So you will make some time?
I can follow up. I, I know a couple of, I have a couple of their email addresses and that have come up here, and I'll be glad to reach out to them later this week.
That way you get a better understanding of what, like you said, the things you've heard versus what actually is going on. I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I would like to address that when I make a decision, I do make it with every child in mind and what is best for every child in every situation. And I don't backdoor deal or bend to political whims. So...
I was just gonna say, you know, as always, we love when people show up to the meetings and participate, and so any voice in our community is an important voice, so we just thank people for coming. I do want to clarify though, because I think this is something we hit on over and over again. The five of us do not take a salary. Mrs. Logan and Mr. Miller, they are on staff. We are elected board members that do not take a salary. I just think that's important to understand.
Michael, Julie, Linda. Go ahead, Linda.
It takes courage to get up and have these kind of conversations, and I really appreciate that you came here and spoke directly and honestly about what you're seeing. And I have shared some of the same concerns with Mr. Miller. And I would really appreciate if you meet with these parents. I'd like to have a report back to the board.
Yeah, I just said I would, yep.
I'm sorry, I missed it if you said that. Thank you.
I, I, I mean, I personally like it when people come to the board meetings and let us know how we, you feel. And what, because a lot of the stuff, a lot of the stuff that you say that's going on, we don't know that. So it's always good for community members to bring things to our attention that we can look into it. So I do appreciate that. Mr. Pearl, do you have anything to add?
No, just thanks for coming, and I, I hope that you do follow up, mister, with Mr. Miller.
Julie, do you have anything? Okay. Um, where am I? Wait, wait.
Is there a system where if it's going to be something that's not part of the curriculum, that things are sent out to all the parents and let them know this is what happens, and then the options are...
It's, it's, okay, yeah. It, it should come from the school, yes. It should come from the teacher, from the building principal. If something is different, it's gonna happen, should, in theory, for most things.
No, I, no, we're unfortunately not. Is that right, protocol, Jenny? I'm sorry. I have to...
Could you be more specific? You'd get information from the school district about the COVID-nineteen shot?
There's been no decision made on...
We're not gonna force anyone to get, we don't force anyone to get a COVID shot, ma'am. We're not gonna have any, any of those vaccinations happening without parent permission to do so, if that, if that even happens. I'm sorry. We're, we're not even there yet.
We're not bringing anything to the...
It, I got an email from the, from the BASS organization asking if schools were interested in vaccinating. If we go down that route, it's gonna be with parent permission.
Yeah, we would never...
I'm sorry, but I'm gonna, uh, the question was asked to me about protocol. We do have, according to our board policy, we have two places on the agenda for public comment. Um, if there is anything after that, the community has the ability to contact, um, anyone. But as far as protocol, the other thing too, we are videoing all of these meetings. And so that's the other reason why during public comment, we need people to come to the mic so that everybody can hear that clearly, so that that, when that is replayed, you know, on, on our website, that everybody can hear that, um, those comments.
So in answer to your question too, just so, so, so you know, in answer to your question that you asked, there's the two points of the public comment, and then if you go on the board website, there under school board, there is a button you can press that will, like, one button that will email all of us. So if you, and we welcome that. Email us anytime. I mean, we, we have no problem with that. So if you ever have any questions and it's before a board meeting or a meeting's not coming up and you want to weigh in on your opinion if a decision, oh, excuse me, if a decision's being made, you feel free to anytime email the board. And if anything comes down from your principal that you have an issue with, reach out to your principal first. And then if you don't get the results that you need, then you can reach out to us as well. Through the chain of command. Through the chain of command.
And we also have a policy, and I'm not sure exactly what the policy number is, but regarding anything that a community member would have, I think it's, I think it's complaints maybe under the policy, but that's also something that is available for that process, like you said, to go through.
I mean, as, yeah, as far as, like, the vaccine with Mr. Miller, it was just something that he was brought to his attention today. It wasn't anything we're doing. You're welcome. Closing comments. Um, Mr. Level will start with you.
Um, I don't have any specific closing comments. I think that, you know, as we head towards the end of the year, um, I just appreciate, you know, just as, as much as we as a board can see the dates in front of us and make sure we have on our calendars, I know that it's exciting to see more and more in-person events occurring. And I know we're all excited to be back in person doing events here at the school. So I'm looking forward to all those different things. I've seen the parade of graduates is happening, so that's awesome. Graduation, um, prom and all that. So anyway, we can just keep putting those dates out there. That'd be great for me at least.
Yep.
Uh, great to see the student spotlight tonight, the, seeing the lean Six Sigma principles in action. Um, the water filling stations, I know, you, I, I mean, those often are several thousand dollars to install, or at least they're pretty significant. So for those students to be able to engineer those and get those installed, I think was a great, um, principle. Um, and again, uh, appreciate the interesting comments. Um, I learned that two plus two equals five today. I didn't know that we were teaching that anywhere. So, uh, interesting, interesting comments. So, um, appreciate people coming out tonight. So, thank you.
Had a chance to attend Lakota West Theater, Disney Newsies, and it was an incredible event. The students were, the vocals were amazing. The set design was terrific. And it was just nice to see our kids back doing normal high school things. And, and also attended, uh, Lakota West concert, jazz concert, and some other concerts. And again, far fewer students in there, spread out a lot more, but it was nice to see that happening. And I'm glad that we've created those opportunities. I also appreciated Mr. Miller, your email from this week, talking about, let's give these kids as normal of an ending as we can. Really appreciated that a lot. Uh, and I'm willing... Uh, and I'm willing to do as many graduations as you need to do, so that we can be in person. That's great news all the way around. Yes. You know, I'm thankful for, I see new community member faces and some that have been attending for a bit now, and all the voices that spoke up tonight. And very much appreciate that input, and we need to hear when we're not doing things right. That's the only way we improve the process, and you're invested in your stakeholders, so thank you for being here. Appreciate that.
I'll just thank, uh, do the same and thank everybody for coming tonight, and then, uh, lastly, I was, uh, I was late getting to my gym. So I went on the track at Lakota East, and while I was walking, somebody recognized me as a board member and was really positive about the school year. Overall, despite adversity and all that, and, um, really, it's a tribute to, to look at it and all the teachers and. Staff, principals, everybody who has played a role in it. Um, and it was very reassuring. That the decisions that we've made have been good decisions, and, uh, there's a lot of people happy about it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing else to add. Thanks.
Thanks to the group that came out and shared their opinions tonight, um, and there'll be another graduation announcement later this week, just firming up plans, so. Yes, in person, we'll talk more about that. Uh, we want to get notification to our students and families first, but that's coming, so. We're excited that Sintas is working with us. Won't be like it has been, it won't be last year, but it won't be. The same exactly as it was in 2019, but pretty close.
Well, there'll be confetti cannons.
Yes.
Just one.
That came up today.
Did it?
Yes.
Um, I don't really have anything. Again, we do appreciate that when the public comes and lets us know what's going on in the building, because we don't, obviously, are not in them day to day, so we do appreciate your coming. And it's nice to see some new faces and some familiar faces. Okay, I need a motion to enter into executive session to consider the purchase of property for public purses, purposes. Because premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is diverse. To the general public interest and prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees. Concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Jenny, will you call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes, and we will not be making any decisions or doing any work when we come back from executive session.
Okay, I'm pulling y'all down in the secondary section and I need a luncheon to adjourn.
Mm-hmm.
Can you please call the roll, please? Yes, Mr. Earl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Tadler?
Yes.